Freeport goes off and runs for about a minute or two, and it's got to drive every dog in Freeport nuts.
Is that your Commissioner's comments for today?
Yeah. I'm gonna have that comment to Lanny.
There you go.
Good morning. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, limited public comment. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Shall I sit here?
Yes.
It's my first time.
All right, so whenever you're ready. My name is Mackenzie Peters. I live in Middleville, Michigan. I'm the Administrator of Carthage Village Assisted in Independent Living. I'm here today with a handful of others to express deep concern over the Steering Committee's decision to conjoin Thornapple Manor, Harvest Point, and Commission on Aging into one building with co-mingling spaces. A few points I've heard from Thornapple Manor Commission on Aging and a few of you as I've talked over the last week and a half. One, Thornapple Manor and Harvest Point shouldn't be a realistic competitor because of their prices. Mind you, these are comments made to me. Two, there's enough seniors for everyone. Three, this is convenient and cost-saving move. Four, this campus idea and master plan offers aging in place with potential for growth. These may seem like logical points, but let's break them down. Number one, Harvest Point is a new building. Of course, prices are higher, but not necessarily out of the ballpark for the area. Regardless of price, they charge residents to live there, which means this is a private-pay facility. Therefore, they are operating in a private industry, which then means they are competitors. They don't pay property tax with which the rest of us do, so there's already an advantage. Number two, in assisted living, it is common for people to put their name on a waiting list rather than go to their next best choice. If it comes down to necessity to move, Thornapple Manor in the past has deemed potential residents skilled, long-term care-appropriate. With the COA having a conjoining building, they become a direct line to Thornapple Manor and Harvest Point. No potential resident will look at any other aging-in-place options that offer through end-of-life care such as Carthage and others. Number three, this may be convenient, but it is, in the long run, will not be cost-saving. Thornapple Manor and Harvest Point having the Commission on Aging as an amenity or direct line will put other competitors out of business. This means hundreds of thousands of dollars from the small businesses will no longer be paid out to the county. Plus, hundreds of jobs will be lost, as well as the many beds that the previous admin of Thornapple Manor claimed the county needed. There are many other points I could make. However, the biggest one in this is this. Commission on Aging was designed to be an uninfluenced resource for Berry County seniors. With this merge between Thornapple Manor, who operates in a private industry, Commission on Aging is no longer independent. It will become synonymous with Thornapple Manor and Harvest Point conglomerate and vice versa. In summary, it is never too late to revise plans. We ask that you all truly consider the dynamics of these building plans and the course of action taken by the Steering Committee. Within hope, you realize that this is not the best choice for Berry County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment?
Good morning. Couple weeks ago, what caught my eye-
Would you give us your name and what township you're from, please?
Mike Marlowe Hope Township.
Thank you.
You're welcome. An article caught my eye in the reminder. "Michigan Flatlining on Jobs: No Job Growth Expected Through 2030." This was in the reminder a couple weeks ago. But fear not, there's a plan. This summer, Whitmer created a population commission to study ways to retain and attract residents. And the administration recently launched ads in Georgia, Indiana, Florida, Texas, Tennessee, and South Carolina touting Michigan's progressive policies on issues such as abortion, LGBTQ rights, to attract residents from more politically conservative states. There's another article, I believe it appeared last week's reminder. "Dalton VFW Posts Donates Wood Pellets to Help Local Bronze Star Medal Veteran Heat His Home." And what this, I'm tying into here is over quite a long period of time, what has permeated into our culture is an ideology that's trying to tear this country apart. It's been going on for quite a while. And when I consider people like this, maybe my brother Bruce, that have invested in this country so heavily, it really, it strikes a doggone nerve with me. I don't know about you all, but it does with me. And I'm not trying to endorse this political piece I'm gonna mention right here. I mean, I'm not meaning here to... I just like the way it was framed. It was by Rush Limbaugh. The people that voted for Trump are never going to abandon him. I don't care what Mueller says. I don't care what the media does. They're never gonna abandon him. You know why? They elected him knowing who he is, and in many cases, they admire who he is. He is the one person standing in the way of them losing their country in their minds. That's what's at stake.
Thank you, Mike. The three minutes has expired.
Really?
We do have another public comment section at the end, though, so. We appreciate that. Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none, we'll move ahead with our agenda. Mashia Rose. 2023 L-4029 Tax Rate Request for the Winter Properties.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is just the L-4029 Winter Tax Rate Request. We had one in the summer. This one will allow us to levy taxes in the winter. So once it's approved and signed by the board, it'll be distributed to the local treasurers to collect taxes in November.
And you have seen several of these? Well, you've seen at least one of these so far this year, so. Any questions for Mashia? Again, we appreciate the information and the detail. You make it very easy to read, so. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend approval of the 2023 L-4029 Tax Rate Request for levy of winter property taxes to be signed by the Chairperson. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Tunison, support by Hatfield, to recommend approval of the 2023 L-4029 Tax Rate Request for levy of winter property taxes to be signed by the Chairperson. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mashia. Michael Brown. Oh, wait a minute. Brad Casemore. I had a different agenda with SWIMBA Renewal Agreement. Is Brad here? There he is. Okay.
I'm not Brad.
You're not Brad.
He's the next best thing, though.
Okay.
Do you want me to take a couple of the items until Brad gets here?
Sure.
Want to do that?
Let's do that. So let's start out with Budget Amendment for Economic Impact Payments.
All right, good morning.
Is this working yet?
So this is a request to approve the attached Economic Impact Payment Budget Amendments for payments issued in 2023. We did this as a standalone amendment so that for audit purposes. We're just asking at this point that the Board approve the amendment. It effectively brings the total transfer out of the ARP Act funds for economic impact payments to $725,544.
This is essentially what we had set up last year when you approved these in-
That is correct.
December of last year. Okay.
That is correct. So we're now at a point that they have been, they have been issued and would request that you approve the amendment.
Okay. Questions for Michael?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So what was the growth of our total budget this last year to absorb this?
If I'm at, make sure I understand your question. For 2024, what would be the growth of the budget that has to absorb this? There isn't, because these were one-time payments that were not added to the scale. So when we had the debate and discussion, there was discussion about placing dollars on the scale at that time or not. We didn't have the budgetary numbers that, from inflation, that we now have, and I'll get to that in a minute. So in essence, this $725,544 is a one-time, non-recurring. It did not impact pensions. It did not impact ongoing salaries and wages. It was, they were effectively one-time bonuses, if you may.
So which budget did it come from?
The $725 came from the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, the roughly $11,965, $965,000 that we received. And then various budgets were, is where it was paid out of. So as you go through the amendment, for example, we had to transfer in $252,000 for the general fund. Pages two through seven show the general fund expenditures. And then pages eight and nine provide a more detailed look at where they are. And if you notice on pages eight and nine, there are only two line items per department that are impacted, an economic impact line item in FICA. We did have to pay, of course, FICA on these, but did not pay any other wages or any other benefits associated with it. And then consistent with all of our budget and budget amendments, pages 10, 11, and 12 show the special revenue and other funds, along with then the detail for those. A lot of, a lot of movement, a lot of money that was spent, but also just a lot of movement. So we, again, did that as a standalone amendment so that the auditors have that as an individual document when they come in and do their audit.
Additional questions?
Well, this is the bonus from last year, Michael. We're talking.
That is, that was approved. It was, it's being paid out. Did we pay out the first one?
Three installments.
In December and then April and July, I think it was, or April and June.
Yeah. So. Yeah.
So yes.
Okay. If there are no additional questions, the Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the attached Economic Impact Payment Budget Amendment for payouts issued in 2023. Motion by Smelker, support by Colton. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by Smelker, support by Colton, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the attached Economic Impact Payment Budget Amendment for payments issued in 2023. Additional discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Do you want to continue on, Michael?
That's up to you. I see Brad is, is here, so we can, I can, if the Board wants to, I can keep going, or we can stop for a minute and go back.
These aren't, these aren't too daunting, so why don't we just continue going through these?
All right.
Since you're here.
I'll, I'll try to be brief. So the, the next is Budget Amendment 23-A. It's a standard budget amendment. It does incorporate into the numbers. So if you look on page one at the budget, 2023 budget amount, you'll notice that it lines up with the budget amendment, or the Economic Impact Payment Amendment we just did. Try to help do away with a little bit of the confusion. This one is a comprehensive amendment that increases revenues by $897,000 and expenditures by about $1 million. And this one incorporates the, the single largest rep driver to revenue, our property taxes. If you'll remember that Mashia Rose advised that we would see an inflationary increase in our property tax revenue. So when we were budgeting revenues for 2023, back in the summer of 2022, we didn't know what those revenues were gonna look like, that we were gonna see the inflationary impact to property tax. We also, it also adjusts a number of revenue line items within the general fund. Takes a look at those, because again, we're a year back trying to make, trying to budget for those. We don't have the luxury as well of the audit. So between the time that we, we do the budget, if you go back a year ago in June or July, we base those on the information that we have at that point. Then we get, at the end of the year, we actually not know what the year-end revenues were. The audit comes through, we get the audited amount, so it allows us at this moment to, to adjust our revenues based on what 2022 actually did.
Looks like, looks like the biggest driver on this budget amendment, or the biggest amount, is the proceeds from the sale of the Algonquin Lake property.
The other is the Algonquin Lake property, and you're correct. So this budget includes the $750,000 that we received from the sale of the Algonquin property. On the revenue, or on the expenditure side, it then transfers that $750,000 out to a construction fund for the Commission on Aging. So that will be the first of the roughly $3 million that will be placed in the, the construction fund.
Okay. Questions for Michael? Hearing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of Budget Amendment 23-A.
So moved.
Support, Cantwell.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Cantfield, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of Budget 20, Budget Amendment 23-A. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
And I apologize to everyone for not having my phone.
There's a jar somewhere around here. You owe a quarter, so you know.
It's contempt of court, actually, in the courtroom. Get caught.
Equalization Office Furniture Replacement?
Yeah, this is a, a request for an additional, just shy of $4,000, $3,963.07 from the Capital Replacement Fund to replace the furniture in the equalization office. At the beginning of the year and included in the 2023 budget was an appropriation to replace the furniture in equalization. After they received bids for the furniture, it came in about $4,000 higher. This is, that's a request to appropriate those funds from the capital replacement. We have them in the capital replacement. And I'd just ask that the Board authorize the approval of that additional, so this project can get done.
So it was already authorized in the budget, just like everything else with the little inflationary pressure. Prices are up. So.
It's the, for, for those that were involved and are interested, it's part of the My Deal Purchasing Program. It's the same company and same furniture that was used for the friend of the court relocation. It's the company we've been using the basement down in the Courts and Law Building. So we've been very happy with so far.
Awesome. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of additional $3,963.07 from the Capital Replacement Fund to replace the furniture in the equalization office.
So moved, Doster.
Or Hatfield.
Motion by Doster, support by Hatfield, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of additional $3,963.07 from the Capital Replacement Fund to replace furniture in the equalization office. Additional discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Last but not least, 2023 Audit Engagement.
Yeah, this is a request to recommend of the Board approving the attached proposal from Gaybridge &amp; Company, who's our current auditor for financial audit services for the years ending 2023 and 2024. We're just coming off of a six-year engagement with Abraham, or I mean, not Abraham, yes, me dating myself, Gaybridge &amp; Company. And looking at some of the changes that are coming with retirements and that in the next year, year and a half. One consistent that I would, I guess, make a recommendation would be our auditor. Normally, we, we might look at going out for, for bid, seeing what's out there. Some argue that you should be switching auditors from time to time. I don't think that's a bad scenario. But, but I don't know that, and I'm not concerned, I guess, at this point, that making an eight-year engagement is a problem. I'm, I'm more concerned that we're gonna have a, potentially a treasurer, a, a new treasurer, new administrator, and the auditor's gonna come in new. And, and they just, they, the, Gaybridge &amp; Company understands, they have all of our pre-work documents already. So it just will be a considerable workload, lessening of a workload as we onboard new folks in the next few years. And then at that point, could look to see if, if they wanted to go out for bids. The price, we have seen a significant price increase with this. I reached out to Dave Dehan, our, with Walker, Fluke, and Sheldon, to see if he had any concerns. I reached out to some of my peers to see how it rates. But we were, we were able to put in place that six-year engagement prior to, of course, COVID, and then more importantly, prior to the, to the most recent inflationary side of things. So since 2018, including our 2018 audit through 2022, our audit fee was $26,060 each year. It was flat. There was no growth over that one, two, three, four, five-year period. It was a really competitive, in fact, in 2017, when we went out to, to bid, the year before that, we were paying $38,200. So our fee dropped from $38,200 down to just over $26,000, and it remained at $26,000. You'll notice that this first year fee is, is $49,860. So I did have a little concern with, with that price. I reached out to my peers and to, to try to see where, where their fees are at. You know, Midland's a bit bigger than us, $70,000. Isabella, $44,000. Montcom is at $40,000. Clinton is at $36,000. So Jackson is at, at 87. So it's a bit all over the board and depends on your size. I still think it's a competitive price at this point, and in light of everything, I would, I'd still recommend moving forward with the two-year extension from, from Gaybridge.
Okay. Questions for Michael?
Can you kind of explain from them why the increase of that much, though? I mean, that seems a significant amount of increase.
It is. It's paying, it's, it's, it's paying employees. It's staffing. You know, and, and the big thing is that they've, Joe wanted to come, he actually approached me, the print, the principal with the company two years ago, and wanted a, an increase, and I just said, Joe, we can't do that. And, and, and he backed away from it at that time. But they've just, again, they have been flat at $26,000 for one, two, three, four. No increase for five years. And I, I asked Dave Dehan, and he said he's seen for the last few years, year over year, anywhere from 10% to 30% in- year over year, anywhere from 10 to 30% increases with fees. So I, yeah, I get it. It's, normally it's a tough pill to swallow, but. And, and had we seen inflationary increases over that five years, one, two, three, yeah, five or six years, I guess it's six years of our engagement now. It might be a little different, but they came, like I said, when they came in at, at, at 26, and that's their business. I mean, they, they chose to bid that. I don't feel for them, if you may. I'm not trying to negotiate on their behalf because they chose to, to put that bid in. But, but we have been happy with their service. They, they do a nice job. They, they, the, the key right now is they understand our county.
So they are locked in next year at the same price?
No, no, this, so we do not have an audit firm right now. If, we either need to, and not to make this a ultimatum. If you, we either approve this, or I need to then go out for bid and solicit proposals. And I can do either one. Again, I'm coming to the table today recommending that, that we not seek proposals and, and risk a different audit firm.
Commissioner Smelker?
Now, that was 49,000 for two years?
That's 49 for, for one year, 50 for the next year.
From 49 to 50?
49, 860 to 5800.
Commissioner Hatfield?
I think your rationale for not making a change in firm at this point is, makes sense. But, yeah, at least in the corporate world, five-year rotation of auditors is common. At least in the banking industry, it's mandated. So I do think that next time, you know, we should take it out for, for bid and consider a, a rotation. But I'm comfortable with your recommendation for this year and next year.
I think what it looks like is we've been getting a heck of a deal at 26, 6 for a few years. That, so that's, that's below market value for it. So they're probably making up a little bit on that end. But that was a heck of a deal for those six years. There are no further questions. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approving the attached proposal from Gaybridge and Company for Financial Audit Services for the years ending December 21st, December 31st, 2023 and 2024.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Motion by Tunisen, support by Smelker to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approving of the attached proposal from Gaybridge and Company for the Financial Audit Services for the years ending December 31st, 2023 and 2024. Additional questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Michael. Now, we will go back to Brad Casemore and SWMBH renewal agreement.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning Chairman Jackson. Commissioners, thank you for having us today. I'm Brad Casemore, representing Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health as its CEO. Let my colleague introduce himself, to himself, and then we'll launch into it.
Good morning. Next best thing. I'm Joel Smith. I'm the Director of Substance Use Disorder Treatment and Prevention Services at Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health.
All right. So first, for those of you who are less familiar and perhaps even for the, for the staff and for the public who are here, Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health is a regional entity formed under the Michigan Mental Health Code by eight community mental health authorities, including Berry County Community Mental Health Authority and seven others here in southwest Michigan. We were formed in 2013 and our contract with the Michigan Department of Health and Services began in 2014, January 1 of 2014. So as a regional entity, we were required to fulfill and complete what's known as an application for participation with the state. That then was approved and in January 1 of 2014, we accepted and have been executing since then, a contract with the state as a prepaid inpatient health plan. In short, we manage the specialty supports and services Medicaid and Healthy Michigan program benefits for persons with intellectual developmental disabilities, severe emotional disturbance, severe mental illness, substance use disorders and autism spectrum disorders. Our annual budget is about 340 million. And then on top of the Medicaid and Healthy Michigan, we also manage the federal mental health block grant, the federal substance use disorder block grant. And as I'm sure most of you know, what's known as the PA 2 dollars for our region. So that's the short version on who we are and what we do. Our primary purpose here today is to seek conversation, discussion, and ultimately, Board Commission approval of an intergovernmental contract. Under the statutes relevant to regional entities, community mental health entities, the nine parties, which include Berry County, seven counties and Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health, are required to have amongst in between them an intergovernmental contract. We first executed that contract with this commission and seven other commissions in 2013. We renewed it roughly 2018 and now it's time to renew it again. The, the current contract does expire December 31 of this year. We have similar conversations with other commissions. I believe we have two back from county commissions, signed, sealed and delivered. So that's the introduction for us, Mr. Chairman, of who we are, what we're here for. We're happy to answer any questions. My belief, my recollection is that we submitted a, the intergovernmental contract to the commission and to Mr. Brown some three or four months ago. So we're happy to be here and converse, discuss with you that contract and what it means and who we are and what we do, to the extent that you have interest in that as well.
Okay. Commissioner Doster, you serve on that board. Would you like to add anything to that or?
That's correct. As you may recall, I brought up a few concerns regarding this contract with the board and with the board that I sit on as well. Regarding, in looking at it from a lawyer point of view, there was no terms regarding what would happen if the contract no longer existed, was my concern. In speaking with, Michael Brown has had discussions with Brad. I think my concerns have been assuaged. I, I think that they've been, there were sig, uh, good enough answers to those questions at this point. This is a contract, my understanding, it has to be unanimous, every single line in it. Two of the counties have already passed it at this point. Probably the, the time to go into some of these points would be at the next time that it's renewed, provided I'm still on the board or, or someone's on that board at that point. So I would be, the, the changes actually are fairly insignificant from the original contract or the other two contracts that this board has passed. They're just logical updates. There's nothing dramatic changes. It's just that these points that I had brought up had never been addressed. And of course, they wouldn't necessarily have been addressed in the first contract because there, you know, it's only now that there's funds that have accumulated. It's like, well, what would happen to these funds if there was a dissolution, either on our part or their part? This contract only allows, I think, 30-day notice for opting out of it at a certain point, which could be before a next meeting was even brought to their attention. So those are things I'd like to see perhaps changed or looked at the next time this thing is up. At this point, I don't know if there's other questions from other board members, but I'd be willing to go ahead. I have other questions that I'd like to address.
Can you please?
Well, these are other things that, not necessarily this contract. So I, I would go ahead with the motion.
Okay.
At this point on the contract. I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Okay. Additional questions from Commissioners? For Brad or Joel? Okay.
Okay.
The Chair would entertain, the Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the attached intergovernmental contract between Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Regional Entity and the Counties of Berry, Berry and Branch, Calhoun, Cass, Kalamazoo, St. Joseph and Van Buren for purposes of setting forth the terms and conditions for the establishment of a Substance Use Disorder SUD Oversight Policy Board pursuant to MCL 330-1287 subsection 5 and authorize the Board Chair to sign it.
So moved, Doster.
Is there support?
Support Hatfield.
Motion by Doster, support by Hatfield to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of detached intergovernmental, intergovernmental contract between Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Regional Entity and the Counties of Berry, Berry, Berry and Branch, Calhoun, Cass, Kalamazoo, St. Joseph, Van Buren for the purposes of setting forth the terms and conditions for the establishment of Substance Use Disorder Oversight Policy Board pursuant to MCL 330-1287 and authorize the Board Chair to sign it. Additional questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Commissioner Doster, do you have other comments regarding the substance task force?
Yes. The SWMBH, I'm trying to simplify this to get out of some of these acronyms. Basically has two boards. One deals primarily with the alcohol tax. That's the PA 2 tax. That's the one that this board has appointed me to. And then they also have a, a board that's with a significantly larger budget that deals primarily with Medicaid, which the Mental Health Board, which I sit on, has appointed me to. And then they're going to determine whether I have a conflict of interest, whether I sit on that board or not here at the next board meeting. Regarding the alcohol tax board, the, I noticed the other counties, there's seven other counties in our, our regional group, that the trial courts of a number of those counties had also made requests for funds. Currently, we have a surplus or a fund balance, I guess would be a way to say it, in our PA 2 funds there of approximately $750,000. We're at the, currently spending about 70 grand a year, so that's quite a, a large amount. I had some discussions with our trial court here saying that since other counties were making requests to help fund the trial courts, that they perhaps look at submitting some requests to, to burn up some of these funds because I think that it's kind of a large amount to hold. It that, you know, it doesn't produce a tremendous amount of interest. I think it's 2% return due to the requirements of the, the federal government on these things. So we're going to try to do a, a rather large, one-time-only request primarily for drug testing for the courts. Drug testing was something that I believe that the, the Sheriff Department used to do for us. And they no longer are wanting to do that. And so we're having to go elsewhere at a greatly increased price. And that might be something that can be funded, at least partially with this, this fund. And there are other counseling services. Joel, I don't know if there's something that you could, is this accurate?
Yeah, it's, yeah, well done, well done. Yeah, the proposal I've been in discuss, in discussion with Tammy Price from the Adult Specialty Courts. They did submit a proposal that looked at primarily drug testing services for their specialty courts, as well as treatment services for the drug treatment courts. So that includes a variety of actual treatment groups. And then also funding a peer recovery coach. So this is someone that works with individuals in those specialty courts that is in recovery themselves, has that lived experience that we have seen to make a significant difference. So that proposal has been submitted. We're currently reviewing it and I've had multiple conversations with both Ms. Price as well as Commissioner Doster. And we will, we hope to kind of button up a proposal by the end of the week based on a, on, on an amount. As soon as I get a couple of other things clarified about some contracting requirements that we have.
So those funds are available?
They are, yes. And yeah, Commissioner Doster did. Berry County has a fairly robust fund balance right now. The caveat would be that we would recommend it would be a kind of a one-time, one-year funding. The additional piece is the specialty courts have also submitted additional grants that they have just not heard back from as well. So there may be some, that number may be somewhat fluid based on the results of their other grant submissions.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for the information, the presentation, the update, the contract.
I did have a couple other little questions, if I could.
Okay.
Brad, there's, it's my understanding that you'd sent out some information on a policy governance training?
Yes.
And, and that's something that you personally have, have taken or you recommend it for?
So policy governance is a theory and practice of, of governance for boards. It's been around decades. It is actually hardcoded into the, as, as Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health bylaws. So I've lived and breathed it with my, my, my board, whom I've reported to and my chairman, chair people since 2002, since I've been doing this. So that's what it is. Yes, both the SWMBH Board and I and multiple board members have taken advantage of policy governance, development opportunities, educational opportunities. As it happens, we have a policy governance consultant working with management and the board to sort of maintenance and refresh and take a look at our policies. And as it happens, coincidentally, September 28 and 29, I'm going to a two-day policy governance because we're committed to it. It's, as I said, it's hardcoded in our bylaws. So that's a short answer of yes, I've been involved in it. Yes, I recommend it for interested board members. And yes, we think it's important, particularly for those who, who haven't lived and breathed it before and who are coming onto a board like the SWMBH Board that, that does operate under policy governance. Even some of the language is foreign. So, and the concepts are not illogical, but it takes some structure to get to learn them and know them. So yes, I would endorse participation for SWMBH Board members.
And I bring it up because it, the, under Commissioner comments, I'm going to make a request to this board for training for myself under this, so.
You may not be able to make a request, a formal agenda request, but it's certainly something that could be mentioned, so.
Okay, I'll mention it.
So, yep. All right.
The other board, the one that I haven't actually been appointed to or yet at this point, the Medicaid Board, it's quite a large board and it's currently, I think, over budget by a couple percentage points. But since it's such a large budget, that's a fairly substantial number. I think $6 million or something. Is there something that you can, uh, address to that? Why, why has that occurred? Is it something, a, a change of, of who is eligible for this that we're required or?
Yeah, I'll try not to get too jargony or technical or acronyms here, but I do appreciate the question. So Commissioner Doster is making the distinction between the Substance Use Disorder Oversight Policy Board, which this board, this commission has appointed him to, as he pointed out, and the Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Regional Entity Board. That board is made up of eight persons who are on the CMH boards, who have been appointed by the CMH boards. That is the entity that governs the, the regional entity, which is what we are and who we are from. Yes, this fiscal year '23 is materially over budget, actually more like to the tune of 12, 12 million dollars. We do still anticipate to have Medicaid savings leaving fiscal year '23. So I'll try to make this really short and sweet. So at the end of each fiscal year, we can carry forward Medicaid savings of 5%. From fiscal year '22 into fiscal year '23, we carried forward about 19 million in Medicaid savings. That is the first 19 million we spent in fiscal year '23, which of course started October 1 of 2022. Latest projections I saw this morning that at first, my, the projections were that we were going to go through all of that. I now have a second draft or consideration for this budget that we may, I don't want to use a specific number, but that we won't burn through all that. So we'll go into fiscal year '24 with some Medicaid savings. And then for this body to know. to know, very important, we also, as a prepaid inpatient plan, regional entity, we are permitted to keep in hold what's known as an internal service fund. Think of SWMBH as what we are, we're a benefits manager, we're the insurance company. So, the state of Michigan permits us to have an internal service fund, the rainy day fund, so to speak, for these kinds of circumstances. And the current balance in that now is about $23 million, somewhere north of that. So, yes, it's over budget, yes, we're okay for '23, yes, we're reasonably okay going into '24. And basically, the short reasoning fashion now is, coming out of COVID, we've seen a huge demand. All, I think we're all aware that the pandemic, even though it was said it was over, what, six months ago or whatever, has had significant negative impact for children, adolescents, adults, elderly people with isolation, with anxiety, with depression, with loss of family connections. So, that is sort of the wave of need and demand that we have been seeing in the last year or so, and that continues. In addition, as was mentioned earlier by this commission, and of course by Administrator Brown, everything costs more. Direct care workers are very hard to come by. We have, we have providers that, they may have 18 beds in their facility, say, for example, and they could only staff 12. So, so that creates, what, it creates a supply, supply-demand problem. Everybody wants those services, it's limited. So, that's, that's the short version without getting too, I guess, deep into it, but I hope that's adequate or least. And I, and I want to say, Commissioner Doster, I do appreciate your being on both boards and this commission. I've been very appreciative of your intellect and your initiative and your, your interest in all these issues. And I remember at the S U D Oversight Policy Board, when you asked me about, well, what happens if the contract goes away? It was a head scratcher for me, I hadn't thought about it before. So, I have thought about it and talked about it with the commissioner. So, again, I appreciate your interest in all this, and the commissions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad, thank you, Joel. Appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown, for your help.
Commissioners, do we need a break, or you want to continue on? We got? Everybody good? Okay. Commissioner Doster, board rule change.
I'm requesting a change to the bylaws for the board. I had mentioned this in January, and it's just kind of circling back at this point. What I would like to accomplish is to give the chair some additional power, actually. At this point, I think that the chair should have the discretion whether they wish to call on members of the audience during the board meeting. Members of the audience obviously have two public comments, periods. Under our current bylaws, the chair is compelled to call on people from the audience at any point during the board, and I think that it sometimes can cut our continuity of thought. So, I would like to give the chair the discretion to be able to call on people if he so chose to do so and thought that it was appropriate in furthering our discussions. So, that's what these changes are.
Okay, that includes, under subsection C, consent agenda, you had said you want to take out during the approval of the written agenda, the chairperson to announce if a citizen wishes to comment on an item. On consent agenda, please request, to please request such at that time. If a request is made, then the item will be removed. So, you want to, you want to take that out of our current board rules and the citizen participation section out of there. And I noted on section I, that there is a, there is a section addressing comments from the floor, and it does say, only members of the Berry County Board of Commissioners shall be given the floor to speak during any board meeting, except anyone who desires to speak, basically under public comment, either one or two. County officials or personnel may speak with the consent of the chairperson, and any person with the consent of the chairperson or the majority of the board. So, it doesn't eliminate citizen participation, it just, as Mark said, it gives the chair a little more discretion. So, I personally-
That's my intent, yes.
I personally don't mind citizen participation, especially at the committee of the whole meeting like we have today. If there's something that's missed, or some, someone feels that we aren't adequately addressing something, sometimes it's good to come up. During the board meeting, we've already decided some of these things. And I also think that when there's the opportunity to remove something from the consent agenda, like Mike Marlowe is here, he's from my district, I know if Mike called me and said, hey, I have questions on this, can we talk about this, remove this, or have a discussion, if somebody from my district is compelling me to do that with a good reason, we could follow suit there. So, we certainly do not in any way want to, want to restrict citizen participation, but maybe just guide it a little bit, so. Commissioner Colton, thoughts or questions?
Well, I've been in local government like over 25 years, in village, school board, township, city, even did, you know, six years in state government. I've never seen a situation where a member of the audience could remove something, you know, from an agenda. And this is something that was added, were you there when it was added?
I don't remember when it was added. I can tell you, in my eight years of being a commissioner, it's been used very limitedly, both of those items, so.
Well, when I was previously a commissioner, it wasn't there. So, but I've just, I've never seen this practice anywhere. And I've been to a lot of meetings, and so, I don't, I really don't think it's appropriate. So, I will support this.
Commissioners Smelker.
We usually change the bylaws mid the first of the year. And I perceive that we haven't seen this used very much, at least I haven't, when I've been here over 10 years. I don't think it's hurting anything, and I'll vote no on this.
Commissioner Tunison?
I kind of agree with John as far as beginning of the year. I have no problem revisiting this, but I don't really want to limit public in any way.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell?
Gosh, this is crazy, John, I'm agreeing with you.
We're in trouble.
That is crazy.
I think it's something that may end up coming off there. I, I, I'm very cautious about doing anything that limits public. I think we're here representing them, and I think we need to hear what they say most of the time. I, like John and Bob, I think we have a time set up for that first of the year to deal with bylaws, and I think we can make it through till then.
Commissioner Hatfield?
I would also agree. I think that Commissioner Doster raises some, some good points in comparison to how meetings are normally structured, but I would really prefer to see it done as part of our annual review of our bylaws.
Okay, okay. It doesn't appear to have broad-based support at this point for it, based on Commissioner comments. Do you want to put a vote on this right now, or would you prefer to table this and review it at a future date?
I think we could table it and review it at a future date.
Okay, okay. I don't think the changes are unreasonable. Like I said, I think there are provisions in there for it, but typically, we do normally review these at the first part of the year and go from there, so.
I, I do, for my own defense, I, I did bring these up at the first of the year, at the-
Yes, you did.
Well, unfortunately, you have four newbies.
So, yes, you did, so, okay. There is not a motion on the floor, so we will, in essence, table that and hold it and review it in the near future. Thank you. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public, any member of the public may address the board for up to three minutes.
Mike, Hope Township. I guess the purpose of, of what I was trying to accomplish here on behalf of a lot of my fellow citizens was that, from time to time, we may ask the largest elected body in the county to stand shoulder to shoulder with us, and perhaps a resolution that may come up. I have section 4611, powers of the county Board of Commissioners, Act 156. It defines all your, you know, the powers of the committee, but it, it doesn't say that, like 50-some other counties in the state have adapted resolutions that have been brought to them. And, and I guess, in the vein of what I was alluding to in the first three minutes about investments that have been made by people that shed their blood and things for our country, you know, this isn't about a black or white issue, it's, it's really not, brown, whatever. Since the Civil War, the, the Congressional Medal of Honor was enacted, and about 3,400 recipients, and about 90 of them were black, one of them earned two. 60 were Latino. And this country is a good and decent country, and it, and it deserves to be preserved, you know, our heritage and culture. In World War II, Normandy, 9,388 American soldiers helped to liberate France. The only thing America asked for was 172.5 acres to bury those liberators. And maybe America kind of owed France a bit because of their help in 1776, helped immensely. And General Lafayette's portrait in the House chambers to the left of the Speaker's rostrum, I believe they call it, is the portrait of General Lafayette, and to the right is General George Washington. And I think there's a lot of countries that are watching America, and they're seeing us descending into something that they're afraid of too, just like a lot of our citizens. Comes a doggone time when staying in their own lane, I don't know, I don't think that dog hunts anymore, really, I really don't. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that I think we can agree on, and one of them is, is the preservation of our heritage and culture for future generations, doggone it all, we have future generations coming up. And I think there's been a sissification of our culture, quite frankly, and a lot of us aren't feeling too comfortable. I've been around for 71 years, and half my 71 years, doggone it, there was a defined good and bad. You had heroes, wars, cowboy shows, and all that stuff. And then here of late, doggone, look what, look what you see and hear. It's not inspiring.
Can you summarize your comments for us, Mike?
Yes. Please give consideration, more consideration when resolutions are passed. We need to form a coalition, a coalition of, of bodies to thwart off these things that may come down the pike at us.
Thank you.
That's what I'm asking. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Additional public comment?
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Don Eslick with Hastings Charter Township. Sitting in this meeting this morning, heard a lot of great points being made, but it consistently leads me back to ask the question, why? Why are things needed? Why should they be allowed? And why can't we be self-sustaining? I hear of these decisions made about spending $47,000 on extra non-audits that we don't want to change because we can't submit bids, just for the stroke of, you know, a vote, not a big deal. How about $3 million for the Commission on Aging, getting a new facility? Stroke of pen, not a big deal. It is a big deal as a small business owner in this county. We struggle to get employees, we struggle to stay self-sufficient, and we want to continue to help impact our county in a way that enriches the lives of our seniors. And when I hear these new facilities being built, is that what our seniors really need? Or do they need help with assistance in being able to provide those types of facilities and being able to go into them? We have a facility that's two years behind schedule with Harvest Point, $14 million. Went through, couldn't, didn't even know about it until it was already passed. Finding knowledge is not very easy, but those that seek it, get it. I found out about this a week ago, that they're, they want to move the Commission on Aging out to Harvest Point. Is that the most accessible point for our seniors? Who knows? Studies have to be done. Have they been done? I don't know, because that information isn't readily available. And so, I'm here before you today just to ask you guys to think about the why. Is this creating the biggest impact for our seniors, and is this the right decision? Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. Tammy Price, I do live in Hastings Charter Township, but I'm here as a result of my position with the trial court, and I just want to thank everybody. You all have been supportive anytime I've come before you. John, you stood on my board, I just want to thank you for that. I also want to thank Mark. He has worked really hard for this county, for my office, for the citizens. By opening up this additional funding source, we're going to be able to provide additional services to the people that we work with, and that's huge. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tammy. Additional public comment? Going once, okay. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Tunison?
I want to talk a little bit about the COA building, since how there is a concern about it. As commissioners, it's our job to try to save money for the county, save money for the residents of the county, and look out for the county and the people here. With savings of probably a million dollars just in a kitchen alone, by moving Commission on Aging out to Harvest Point and utilizing the services and bringing the Meals on Wheels back to Hastings versus buying them from Grand Rapids, and the cooperation between both facilities and what they can offer is the whole idea behind this, and the, and the cooperation that's never really been there previously. And it's a, it's a great thing to see that there's actually cooperation going on, and that's what we kind of felt people wanted, was to see people working together for once. And that's what this will offer, is people working together and getting something done, and actually providing a great service. So, in regards to, like, the facility being tax-free, it's tax-free right now where it's at. If somebody's got a better idea where this needs to be, bring it up, but it's the most logical place to utilize services.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I would just like to invite everybody down to William Smith Park, which is behind the Fire Barn in Dalton. We're having a, what we're calling a Vet Fest for the veterans, all veterans in the county, families, showing appreciation for our veterans. It starts at 1:00 on Saturday and runs till 7:00. We have four different bands, probably mostly country, a little rock and roll in there. If you can come on down, we'd love to have you.
Awesome. Commissioner Hatfield?
Thank you. I would certainly echo Commissioner Tunison's comments, feel very strongly about that. I'd also like to remind everybody that I think on the next COA, or excuse me, on the next C O W, Committee of the Whole Agenda, that we will be receiving the final draft of the master plan, and, you know, there- And, you know, there have been a lot of questions raised about some components of, of that plan and Jim McManus will be here and I think it'll be an excellent opportunity to get some of those questions answered and clarified.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Smelker?
I echo what Commissioner Tunisson says on the COA and I think we probably could get information out better, but I also think there's ways to work around that, so there is no partiality shown, like quarterly meetings with other homes and stuff like that, that all can be worked on.
Okay. Commissioner Colton?
Well, a couple of things over in Nashville, the, the big parking lot project is coming to an end and the best part of it is now we're getting, as part of this actual real bathrooms at the baseball field, no more porta potties. And, and then also this next Village of Nashville meeting, we, we are going for approval of a community garden, still bringing on partners. This all started with an idea of the Blue Zones presentation from Catherine and them as a partner, we got, the Food Bank is a partner that will accept any fresh fruits and vegetables we give them, because boy, the community really needs it, certain people in the community really need fresh fruits and vegetables. And we're working on bringing on MSU Extension and Route 66 Business Districts. So hopefully I'll be able to report to the next meeting that this has been approved. The village has already laid out a plot of land, kind of behind the ballfields with access to water, really excited about that.
Interesting, interesting. Commissioner Doster?
Yes, I'd like to discuss a little bit about the Lighthouse on the Lake. I don't know if many of you are familiar, there's an organization out on Green Street, kind of across from the Fish Hatchery Park, that is, it is for people in need of emotional support, substance abuse, mental health. The primary funder is mental health. I've just started getting involved with this organization. To me, it looks like a worthy organization. They are having a problem currently with transportation of getting people there. They have a grant from the Berry Community Foundation for $2,500 a year for, to help provide transport for the people who use their services there, which they hand over to Transit, Berry County Transit. But apparently due to, I guess, lack of drivers at Berry County Transit, that they have not been able to get these people, even people who are on a regular schedule, there and back. And because of that, mental health is seeing that the numbers are diminishing there because people are not able to get the transport there. So their, mental health is currently over budget. They are discussing possibly cutting funding for this organization, which I, I think provides a, a good service and which I would kind of hate to see, just because I don't know enough about it, to, to see it killed off at this point without really a chance. And it, you know, it's just one of these circular problems and I don't know if anything can be done with Transit to help make these people all a higher priority or something. But I thought I'd bring it to the board's attention. I think this organization also would be a good recipient for, I know there's a lot of area churches that look for some sort of outreach of, you know, who have small funds available. And this would be something that, you know, the money would be here in Berry County and they could actually see results from and might be a good thing to, for churches to donate to as well, so.
Thank you. Just some final comments to piggyback on one or few other commissioners have talked about. If you represent a senior care facility in the county and you're here today, thank you. Your voices are being heard, we're not going to just dismiss this as something. That all input is important input and it's valuable input because there's always an opportunity to be better. We just have to put our minds together and think about how we can create more communication, more collaboration and certainly a fair playing field for everybody involved in senior care because our number one goal is to provide the best possible care and opportunity for seniors in the county. One of the things we constantly hear about is isolation and loneliness. We've heard about the food supplies and things like that. We're trying to create a model that really does something special in Berry County. But I don't think we can do that by not having input from other providers in the county as well. I think there's an opportunity, if we really think about this, that maybe we can put an advisory team together that could meet, I don't know if it's quarterly, monthly, and figure out how to involve those other care facilities with the COA because we want to be sure there's equal representation. I've, I've got a parent that's probably heading in that direction and I know that location is one of the biggest things, location to where the younger kids or the kids live in that home. So, you know, the location of COA in Harvest Point is not going to be ideal for everybody. There are certainly places throughout in Middleville and that northern part of the county is also growing strongly. So we'll address this and continue to think about it, but we just want you to know that your voices are heard. We appreciate your input. We appreciate you coming here and expressing those concerns. We want to be sure that there is a meeting of the minds and something we can do so everybody is comfortable with the process and you don't feel like you're being left out. Because if we alienate one part, it is not, COA and Harvest Point is not the point guard for the county. It is a network of care throughout the county that's required to take care of our seniors and the growing boomer population retiring, we need all of you. So we don't want to create a, a situation where we're eliminating people or putting people out, that we have to create that network for everybody and we will do that. Just please don't panic and, and shoot arrows all the time. Let's see if we can get a meeting of the minds and figure out what we can do to enhance the opportunity for everybody to provide the best care for seniors. So, and you can have my number and we can talk and we'll figure out what we can do, so.
I think that's the best thing, Mr. Chair, get everybody together.
So anyways, thank you for coming this morning. I know it was a long, wonderful weekend, we're all a little worn out, but we appreciate it. We are adjourned, thank you.